Do I have support on the motion to?
Work.
Okay, support by Kyle, thank you. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes for June 11th, 2021. Is there support?
Sports.
Support by Brett, thank you. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. Um. Adjustments and applications, we have Jason L. Manning of the Police Department, PCOA Bargaining Unit, request to purchase five years of service credit in the amount of 171,123. Carly Renaud of the Police Department, PCOA Bargaining Unit, request to purchase four years of service credit in the amount of 167,53. Jacob D. Beeson of the Police Department, PCOA Bargaining Unit, request to purchase three years and 10 months of service credit in the amount of 137,536. Stephen R. Hodges, former officer with the Police Department, requests withdrawal of employee non-invested contributions and interest from the plan amounting to 7,068,70. James R. Warren III of the Police Department, ROPOA Bargain Unit, requests to purchase one year, five months, and 22 days of service credit in the amount of 64,806. Under applications, we have Craig A. Strauss of the Fire Department, Local 431 Bargaining Unit, 26 years and eight months of service credit, request return date of July 17th, 2021, eligible based on years of service and age. And Craig A. Strauss, request an estimated pension payment in accordance with the policy that we've discussed and is on the record for reference. James W. Jurkowski of the DPS SEIU Bargaining Unit, 24 years and two months of service credit, request return date of June 30th, 2021, eligible based on years of service and age. Jeffrey J. Carlson of the DPS SEIU Bargaining Unit, 34 years and five months of service credit, request return date of July 1, 2021, eligible based on years of service and age. Want to make a motion to approve the adjustments and applications as listed. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Thank you Brett. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion curious. Brings us to investments. I'm gonna turn it over to Terry.
Morning, everybody. And hopefully this will work. I have my laptop is having connectivity trouble, so I'm on an iPad, but I'm gonna try to share my screen here. And let's see here. Okay. Now. Here we go. And hopefully, everybody can see the report up on the screen.
No.
We cannot, we cannot see it, Terry.
Say it again?
We cannot see it.
Cannot see it. Uh, okay. Afraid of that. Um. Okay, well, do hopefully in your meeting package, you'll see the report, so I would refer you to that. And I do apologize for the for the technology issues this morning. Just a very brief overview on the markets. As you see on the on the first page, looking at the table on the right, the second quarter continued to be a very strong quarter for equities. U.S. large cap was up over 8% in the in the quarter. International equities were fairly strong, but did not match the U.S. markets, but up about five, little over 5% for both developed and emerging markets. As you can see, interestingly enough, you know, we'll refer to this in a moment. Investing grade bonds were up in the quarter after having sold off earlier in the year as interest rates actually declined in the in the quarter. And the reason that's curious is that, as we discussed at the prior meeting, the market has really been concerned about inflation. That's been the theme that investors are focused on. And in fact, then we saw the market, we saw bonds sell off in the first quarter because of increased inflation fears. In the second quarter, those fears continued, but the the market became concerned that because inflation was happening, the Fed was likely to take action to raise rates earlier rather than later, which caused long rates to actually decline. So what was happening was, yes, there's inflationary pressure. Investors feared that the Fed would take action, would take the punchbowl away by raising short-term rates. So we saw we saw long-term rates actually decline because investors said, well, Fed's gonna tighten monetary policy, the economy's gonna slow down, they're gonna tamp down inflation. And so you kind of had this this counterintuitive reaction. So the fixed income market has been quite volatile this this year so far. But the the central theme throughout the first six months has been the question of, isn't the inflation that we're seeing currently, is it temporary? Or is it indicative of longer-term pressures? We've got two opinions on that. First, we think it is temporary, and the Fed is certainly in that camp as well. That we're still seeing the dislocations in supply chains in the labor markets as a result of COVID. So there's there are shortages, but that that causing price pressure increases, but that those pressures will abate as the as the year goes on. And and secondly, our view is in history has shown that even when the Fed begins to raise rates, the first round of interest rate increases does not choke off the economy, does not choke off the stock market, the markets tend to go higher. So we think we think the fear of inflation right now, while we're seeing real signs, is is probably overblown that it is temporary. And secondly, the Fed is nowhere close to having tight monetary policy that that would significantly affect the economy or the markets. Of course, time will tell whether that view is right, but expect this volatility to continue, even though it was a good quarter. If you looked at the week-to-week or month-to-month data, you saw some periods of strength, but also periods of weakness as sentiment was shifting on a daily basis. We think that will probably continue through the third quarter at least. In terms of the where the portfolio stands, as you can see, and hopefully you do have a report in front of you. The month began at $183.5 million. We had about 1.2, almost 1.3 million in cash flows out, but had a gain of 1.5 million. So the portfolio ended up slightly higher for the month, went from 183.5 to 183.8 million dollars. On a year-to-date basis, of course, you can see a more meaningful change, starting the year at 174.8 million and ending at 630, at 183.8. And of course, you see the one-year number there as well, with $43 million in gains over the last, over the last 12 months.
Terry, can I jump in for a second?
Yes.
Um. Julie's microphone isn't working right now, but I do have a question
Okay.
to relate to you. Just curious why you think inflation is temporary?
Because there's still, it's ironic because we're seeing help-wanted signs. I mean, I've been, I'm traveling right now, and you go into a restaurant, and they're only at half capacity because they don't have, they don't have sufficient staff. Even though there appears to be a tight labor market right now, wages are going up. The market, the labor market really is not tight. There's still millions and millions of people that are that are either looking for work or out of the labor force, who we expect to come back into the labor force. So we think that right now, what we're seeing is, for a variety of reasons, people are not taking jobs, whether it's because they're taking unemployment or because they have childcare problems, or there's a myriad of reasons that are thrown out there. But we think that that tightness will not continue. Similarly, on the commodity side, there have been supply chain disruptions. Everyone's probably heard about lumber prices going up 90% year-over-year, earlier in the year. And and now we're seeing lumber prices decline 30%. So a lot of these are just temporary, we think temporary disruptions in the supply chain, whether it's materials or labor, and that those disruptions will eventually go away. And we expect to see more people entering the labor market in the fall. We expect to see some of these supply chain problems work their way through as well. So it's been a significant disruption, and we're still feeling the effects of that disruption. But overall, we think the economy will will come back into balance in the third and fourth quarter of the year. Okay, if there are no other questions, turn to performance. Look at it in terms of percentages. As you can see, the the month was up, another positive month, up almost 90 basis points, pretty much tracking in line with the index, up 86 basis points versus 89 basis points for the index. And of course, as you can see, for the quarter, the total portfolio up about five, almost 5.4% versus 5.1% for the benchmark. So again, it's good relative and 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 good absolute returns. And so so far for the year, already, the portfolio of six months is up 8.7%. Would love to have that return each year. And so it's a good six-month number at 8.7%, comfortably ahead of the benchmark as well. As you, as we go farther down and break down the asset classes, you can see the equity portfolio really led the way in the quarter, up 6.6%. And that was, you see the strength here, as I pointed out earlier, the strength in the U.S. equity markets up over 8%. But the non-U.S. markets are very respectable, 4.7% as well. So combined, 6.6%. And unlike the first quarter, in the second quarter, fixed income was positive. So up 2.85%, still a little down on the year as a result of the first quarter's negative returns in the markets, but a nice recovery here in the second quarter, up 2.8%. Core fixed income, as you can see, up 2.1%, still down on the year, down 1.5%. Importantly, the managers are doing a good job. They're they're ahead of their benchmarks so far this year. Emerging market debt rebounded very strongly in the in the second quarter, up 4.6% versus 3.8% for the benchmark. And the outlook for credit is still very positive, and you see that reflected in the high-yield bond portfolio, up 3.8% versus 2.7% for the quarter, and compounding out at a pretty nice 7.3%. So high yield has been the real leader so far this year, and fixed income as the other more interest rate-sensitive areas of the market are still down on the year. But that credit portfolio, that high-yield bond portfolio has really been been leading the way with very strong returns. Similarly, structured credit, which is a very credit-oriented fund as well, up 5.1% for the quarter, and up a very robust 19.5% so far in a year-to-date basis. So that's been very additive to total performance so far. And private equity, up 1.7% for the quarter. A year-to-date, up 3.2% and 13% over the last one year. So that one year, again, very early in its life cycle, continuing to use, continuing to put money to work there. Currently, 300,000 is invested, and but compounding nicely with a with a with a low teens return, even in the early years of that of that fund. So we're very happy to see that. And then finally, core property, up 2.8% for the quarter. So we're seeing the real estate market stabilize and rebound. That's a fairly strong return for the quarter, and up now 4.8% for the year. So erasing the losses that we saw in real estate last summer in the midst of the 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 COVID shutdowns, as you can see now, on a one-year basis, up 4.2%. Again, comfortably ahead of the ahead of the benchmark. So all systems are go, as NASA would say. The portfolio is performing well in this environment and riding out the the short-term volatility that we're seeing. We've got no recommended changes at this point. And we really like the positioning here. And hopefully, the second, the second half of the year will continue to be favorable, albeit with some volatility. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't have any questions. Does anyone else have any questions for Terry? All right, thank you. I'm gonna make a motion to receive and file the information provided by Terry. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Brett supports. Thank you. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul? Paul was a yes, I'm sorry. Your your microphone's not working, but he, Paul is a is a yes, he said, so. That brings us to legal. Did you have anything other than receive and file?
It'll be receive and file. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to receive and file under legal. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Support by Brett. Thank you. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Curious. Our next brings us to setting the date for the next meeting, which tentatively would have been set for August 20th, but that date, I know, does not work for multiple people. August 13th, which was also proposed, does not work for multiple people. Could we do the following Friday? August 27? Does August 27th not work for anyone?
Sure. I'm gonna speak up. This is Carol. I'm planning not to be here on August 27th, so someone else would have to facilitate the meeting.
Can we do, are you off the whole week, or could we do the day before? Could we do Thursday, the 26th? Yes, Julie?
It hasn't been approved, but I'm planning that.
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Julie. It's really echoing, but yes.
Okay, sorry. My mic wasn't working earlier.
That's okay.
We could also discuss meeting in person, so Zoom wouldn't be necessary.
Oh, yeah, right. Totally forgot. Excellent point. Sorry, Carol, you're out of it. So is everyone good then? If we, I guess, first of all, is everyone good meeting in person?
Yep.
Okay. Um. So then, does the Friday, August 27th date work for everyone in person? Perfect. Paul, you're iffy?
Correct.
Okay, well, we're gonna go for it. Sounds good. The next meeting has been set for Friday, August 27th, 8:00 a.m. at City Hall, I guess, in a conference room, to be determined. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to adjourn. Is there support?
That's for.
Support by Brett. Thank you. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right, meeting is adjourned at 8:22 a.m. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing you in person. Take care.
Same. Thank you, Terry. Unless anyone needs a short break, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Retirement Healthcare Investment Board Meeting for Friday, July 16th, 2021, called to order at 8:23 a.m. Begin with roll call. Myself, Lee Collick, serving as chair. I'm attending in Royal Oak, Michigan. We have Brett Nelson serving as chair.
President for Royal Oak.
Thank you. We have Kyle DeBuck, City Commissioner, serving as trustee.
Here in Royal Oak.
Thank you. We have Monica Hunt, City Commissioner, serving as trustee.
Here in Royal Oak.
Thank you. We have Paul Brake, City Manager, serving as trustee.
Here in Royal Oak.
Thank you. Also present, we have Julie Rudd.
Yeah.
Lisa Janord.
Present.
Tom Micho.
Present.
Brian Green.
Present.
All right, thank you. Public comment? There is none. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda for July 16th, 2021. Is there support?
Brett supports.
I'm getting a lot of echoing. I don't know if someone has multiple microphones on. Support by Brett, thank you.
I think Brett, I think Brett just supported that like 10 times.
Right. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes for June 11th, 2021. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Brett supports. Thank you. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right, motion curious. Thank you. That brings us to investments. I'm gonna turn it over to Brian Green.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I want you to know I had this thought as I was preparing for everything, as I looked around the screen for what hopefully is our last meeting. And I was gonna give Kyle a hard time because I think he's been in a different location for each remote meeting. I will miss Tom's wood paneling, but face-to-face, I think it'll be better. So a couple of brief things to cover from our end. Bring it up here on screen. So we've got June 30 flash report. Everything in here is gonna be updated with the exception of real estate. And that literally actually came in last night from a from a pricing standpoint. So that's actually some surprisingly good news that we'll touch on in a second. But the the story really here is what went on for the quarter, for the calendar year so far. And since we're looking at fiscal year-end for the city, it's really a function of what went on in the last year. And, you know, from a performance standpoint, from a system health standpoint, unless the actuary has something absolutely crazy that happened, it should be nothing short of fabulous news when GRS is in to present the valuation, probably in the, if I remember right, like the November, December timeframe. But when we're looking at a June 30 fiscal year-end for cities around the state of Michigan, there are a lot of finance people doing cartwheels down the hallway when we close the books in in positive territory. But you can see, you know, for the quarter, it was positive territory across the board for for every part of the market. I'd say the surprise we had in the quarter was that fixed income was back in positive territory because we did see interest rates grind a little bit lower. That's good news for anybody that's in the process of refinancing or purchasing a new home, although I think anybody trying to purchase a new home right now is has been in for one heck of a ride. You just see some of the stuff that's gone on in our neighborhood here locally has been been nothing short of of an oddity in terms of the amount of offers and listings over, or sorry, offers over ask and contingencies being waived. So the real estate market is certainly back in in good fashion. So a couple of things I'll touch on here, you know, two big headlines, right? The the markets are hitting record highs again and again and again. Should that give me pause? I'm gonna bring up one chart here to show you really quick. I need PDF to cooperate. So one of the things that we've talked about in the past and that we track on a pretty regular basis is the PE ratio, or the price-to-earnings ratio for the S&amp;P 500. And simply put, it's the price of a stock divided by the earnings per share. So if a stock is trading at, say, $40 per share, and they make $2 per share in earnings, that's gonna be a PE of 20 or 20 times. So this is looking at the S&amp;P 500 on a quarterly basis from post-World War II to present. So it's through the end of June of 2021. And each of the data points you see here is essentially the the PE ratio on the S&amp;P 500 as of quarter end. So the long-term average, it's been about 15.8, 15.9 times. Where we sit today is at 25.6 times. So that is, from, you know, from a historical standpoint, definitely on the high side. I mean, it is in the top 25% of occurrences. It's actually in the top 10% from a valuation standpoint. But we're nowhere near where we were from a peak valuation standpoint. So what I leave you with on this is, just because we're at record highs, doesn't mean we don't have the ability to continue to go higher, particularly when you look at the amount of kind of pent-up demand from a consumer standpoint, you know, people that have been saving money through the pandemic, but now have the ability and and comfort to spend it are gonna be a force to be reckoned with here in the in the coming quarters and coming year. The other piece that I found was interesting, and this was a news clip that came into me last night, is there's been much news made about inflation, right? Terry mentioned it, lumber prices being up better than 90% and then crashing back to reality here as of late. You know, what we're paying at the pump is higher than it's been in a number of years. The hidden inflation that we're seeing, right, the box of Cheerios that I bought now has a little bit less in it. It seems like each time I go to the store, or the mac and cheese has a little bit less, kind of that hidden inflation. So I got an interesting just quote from an economist last night. So if you look at the June inflation number that just came in, so measuring the the Consumer Price Index is 4.5% for a year-over-year change. That's a pretty big number, considering we've become used to kind of sub 2%. What gets more interesting is if you dig into that number a little bit further, right? That's a basket of things. It's goods, it's services, it's cars, it's cereal, it's soap, it's the cost of a haircut, it's rent, right? It is a big, big, big basket of different things. So if you break it down a little bit, that 4.5% number, a third of that, so one and a half of that 4.5% comes from one thing, used car prices, which if anybody's quoted, you know, what they could sell their car for, it's pretty insane to see some of the stories out there. But if you take used car prices out of the equation, which I would say are being, you know, driven heavily by a chip shortage, right, I can't get a new car, so I gotta go to the used car market, and that's been bid up something fierce, that 4.5% inflation number becomes 3%. Well, suddenly, that's not kind of out-of-bounds growth. Yeah, that's higher than what we've expected and what we've experienced in recent years, but it's nowhere near the the world is ending kind of inflationary fears. If you dig a little bit further, 90% of the items in that basket were only up 2% year-over-year. So 90% of the goods and services that we're purchasing and using are up, what I'd say is a normal amount of inflation on a year-over-year basis. The other 10% of that basket were up 20% year-over-year. And that includes autos, airlines, movies, and hotels. So what I think you're seeing from an inflationary standpoint, and this is where we kind of look and say, this is more transitory, you know, this is a temporary blip on the radar. This isn't an indication of bigger problems to come. This is more an indication of the world shut down for three months. Think about it, from March of 2020 to June of 2020. And then as we started to reopen since then, obviously, we've gone from an extreme low in prices for hotel rooms and airline prices to an extreme high, just based on demand and scarcity. If you look back over the last two years, prices are only up 3%. So the inflation scare that we have out there, we think is largely overblown and is actually a bit more muted than maybe what you're seeing from a headline standpoint. So how did we fare from an overall portfolio standpoint? That mentioned on the front end, it's nothing short of good news. Preliminary numbers had the quarter at 100, sorry, end of the quarter at 156.5. If I include the 5% gain we saw in the in the second quarter out of Presa, which is our real estate portfolio, this 156.5 number becomes 157 million. So it's pretty amazing, you know, to think about 50, almost $51 million in gains over the last, just over four years, and about a 9.4, that's probably gonna be flirting with a 9.5% return over the the life of the Retiree Healthcare Trust. So we go through this each meeting, but that test of was bonding and investing these monies a profitable measure, and it certainly has been so far. On an asset class-by-asset class basis, we did underperform a little bit for the month. That gap is gonna narrow a bit, just with the real estate numbers that we have coming in. But as the inflation scare kind of waned, we saw growth stocks stoutly outperform. So we did see a little bit of underperformance from two of the managers. But the story is really how things have done in a quarter, year-to-date, and because it's the end of the fiscal year, the trailing one-year number, you know, on a one-year basis, three out of four asset classes outperforming. The only laggard being the international equity portfolio, but outperforming the policy index by 2.3, almost 2.4%. So this should be nothing short of fabulous news from a valuation standpoint, when we talk about the the funding and health of the retiree healthcare system. So we'll go into more detail at the So we'll go into more detail at the August meeting because we'll have the full-blown quarterly book. But with respect to, with respect to prepared comments, that's the extent that we had today. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Does anyone have any questions for Brian? All right, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to receive and file. Is there support?
I support.
Thank you, Brett. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Legal, we have nothing.
Thank you.
Other. I guess worth mentioning also in this meeting is that everyone is in favor with meeting in person for this meeting as well, correct? Okay, so we've set the date for the next meeting, which will be in person at City Hall, Friday, August twenty-seventh, eight-thirty or immediately following the the Pension Board meeting. Does anyone else have anything? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to adjourn. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Thank you, Brett. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. Have a good month, and we'll see you in person.
On real life.
Right.